The public hearing of the Charter Revision Commission. We'll start with a roll call on my right. Tom Senkowitz.
Mike Supran.
Lou Soye.
Mary Portras.
Louisa Drake, this town book. Kathy Hendricks, first electman. Virginia Stanley, second electman.
George Persitler.
Okay, the purpose of this public hearing is to discuss proposed amendments to our town charter. The majority of the proposed amendments are from the Board of Selectmen who are here tonight. And maybe Kathy, you can explain a little bit.
Okay. So. Yes. Because I didn't get the ten sections, so. So. The first one is the annual town meetings. Well, first of all, the first one is section one two dash two, the procedure. We'd like to change that to the requirement of 25 for a quorum. Because what happens with that is it's hard to get 25 people to attend a meeting. And if we don't get 25 people at a meeting, then we have to do that meeting again. If we don't get 25 people at the meeting the second time, then it bounces back to the Board of Selectmen to make the decision. So we'd like to change that to not 25 people, but for whatever people show up to be able to utilize and use that, instead of having to keep coming back for more meetings.
May I add to that?
Yes.
In the past, Lou Paul Sweet was a selectman and had selectmen before that. Every time we had a town meeting, we had to go to the town employees and ask them to come and bring their spouses with them, so that we could get 25. Because most of the time, the public didn't come. So what Kathy just said is true. It's a hard thing to get 25 people there. And you can't, we really can't expect that all of the people who work at the town hall have to come every time. Sometimes they're busy, but it was a difficult year in my home.
And just to add to that, the meetings are posted and advertised, so people who are interested do come. And I think that we should, the people that do come and show an interest, we should let them be heard.
It's pretty sad if you can't get 25 people.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody in the public has a comment on this one here?
On that particular matter?
On this particular one, yes.
Yeah, on that particular matter that's where the selectmen is introduced?
Yes.
What subjects are there? All subjects open for the, in the call of a meeting? Or is it limited to certain things for that meeting?
Well, right now, all town meetings require a minimum of 25 people. All of them, everything. And I do believe, I agree with what George said when I was an employee here. Almost every town meeting, we would be asked to attend us, so that there would be 25 people. I do believe that any important issues, people will be here to vote on that. You had a question?
Do you only post it in the newspaper?
It's also on the town website.
A lot of people don't go on the internet, and not too many people look at the newspaper, is what I'm assuming. I don't know about them, and I only find out about them because of my father-in-law. Otherwise, I wouldn't know either, because I don't look at the paper, and I don't watch, I mean, I don't go on the internet.
I believe that, Louisa can answer that.
Okay, so it's required by law that the town post these things in the legal notices in the paper, so we follow that law. It's not a law to put it on the website, but we do put it on the website anyway. And I'm not sure how else we would get the word out. We do, on a town meeting, post it, also required by law, at every polling place. So that would be at the three fire departments and in front of the town hall. I'm not sure if you have a suggestion of how else to get the word out.
Facebook. Facebook will get you more residents than the newspaper. You don't have to have comments on it, you can close the comments off. So nobody has to respond to anything you put on there. But a Facebook page, again, every time, it's going to get to more residents, and you're going to have more than 25 people.
Yeah.
The newspaper is elite, and they cost you, they charge you to read it on the internet as well. After like five times you visit it, they charge you to read it. So, I mean, a Facebook page, or you don't even have it, so it's closed off to community, information only. And then you don't have to bother of having to answer to residents. And if the residents actually have a question, they can message somebody, and it'd be sent as an email. It's so different.
Well, the commission will consider that. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, Kathy, moving on to number two.
Okay, so number two is section two dash three, annual town meetings. So we recommend that the annual town meeting be delayed. It's difficult for a newly elected first electman to meet his requirement. Also, the incumbent will have to warn the town meeting prior to leaving office. So if you've read the charter, there is to be a meeting. So a first electman, once you're elected, you have two weeks before you come into office. For me, this year, what happened, the day after I came into office, there was supposed to be a town meeting. So first of all, to be able to post that, I would not be here. The person would not be elected to be able to post that. So it would have to be the selectman that is going out to post that. So I think that that date really should be changed. It doesn't really fit in to the schedule of an election and a new person coming in. Any comments or questions?
You can do the same thing as a presidential election. Wait two months. Pardon me. For example, everybody knows that a newly elected president of the United States is elected in November, and then takes office about the third week of January. Or we could do something similar to the same thing. That gives you about two or two and a half months to get things together, all right, before you present yourself, so to speak. Instead of two weeks, it gives you a couple of months. Would that be sufficient amount of time?
Well, I believe our charter also states when the newly elected first electman will take office. So you're going to change one or the other. It seems to me to be easier to change the date of the meeting.
It would give a person that has gone through a hard campaign. I'm working two weeks.
Okay, moving on, Kathy.
Okay, so B. So statute seven dash three four four requires a report, but does not require that an annual report be published in book form and distributed. The town clerk states that the town of Plainfield has not printed an annual report since 2003. The finance director currently prepares the budget report in accordance with seven dash three four four. So again, according to the charter, it states that annually, we should issue a financial book at the town meeting. But at that town meeting, there's always a budget. It hasn't been done, from what I understand, for like the past 15 years. So the same information that you get in that budget at the hearing would be the same thing as having a printed book made.
So basically, this is just a clarification?
Correct.
I believe it's a request to stop printing an annual report.
Right, but in a sense, we do print a annual report, but we budget it. Kathy prepares.
And give you a budget book.
But it's not necessarily a book.
Right, it's not a book. It's just.
Right, but yes, we would have to clarify section B, where it says that it contains a written narrative of town offices and boards, because that, because we don't do that.
This procedure, we haven't done that since 2003. It wasn't until now.
Right.
Searching my memory, which is not too good anymore. But I seem to remember that the statutes, the general statutes, require the town to publish an annual report. I, no, I've been a little out of touch, so it might have been changed in the recent past, but not 15 years ago. Because 15 years ago, I was on the scene, so I knew that I had to have an annual report.
But I believe the statute requires an annual report, but it doesn't have to include the written narrative from all boards and commissions and departments. So I think if we just take that part out, we are doing what we are required to do already.
We will, I would say you should do the more, not less. The more information the public has, the better it is. And that's the purpose of an annual report, not just to do the bare minimum, like to have it done, so that you can hire somebody part-time, some college student or something to do it, put it together. When I first went at the public service, the first job I had was to do an annual report for the town that I was working. Unfortunately, I had photos taken of the town council, and the printer cropped off one of the members. So I was on thin ice.
So we don't want you to do our inquiries.
We will consider that, thank you. Any other questions about that particular item? Okay, moving on.
So item number three, section two dash four, the annual town budget referendum or town budget meeting. The town, the annual town budget referendum or town budget meeting for the consideration of the budget shall be held on the third Monday in May. This is not a top priority, but because of the state budget being so delayed this year, my first thought was if we could push ours back by a few weeks, maybe we would get better numbers from the state to prepare our budget. But it would only give us a two-week window, because we need to have a budget to prepare for our middle race. So this is not the top priority. It's just something that we considered looking at.
May I comment, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I noticed that other towns are moving in the same direction, by the way. Several I've noted. I'm considering, I don't think anyone has changed, but considering changing the date of their budget meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
The second item under that is, at the town meeting, we recommend that changing, well, so the town budget to be presented at the annual and all town budget referendum or meetings shall be presented as two questions. The first question will be to approve or reject the annual operating budget for the town, excluding the education budget. The second question will be to approve or reject the education budget. So what we would like to do is have it so there is one vote for the town, the general operating budget, and then the schools separately. Because the capital improvement plan is already done separately. So that way, if the town is passed and approved, and the Board of Ed is not, the town is still approved, and then it would just be the Board of Education that would have to go and change their numbers and come back and be approved. So that's one of our recommendations.
Comments?
No, it sounds good, actually.
Okay.
So item number four is section two dash seven, petition for referendum. So Louisa, you may want to explain this one, because you have a better understanding of this, and may be able to present a better understanding.
So we have a budget process. And that budget process is actually detailed in two dash four B. And it explains exactly how the budget process works. When you go to town meeting, when you go to referendum, what happens if it fails, what happens if it passes. Then two dash seven is about petitioning for referendum. Most of you probably know, last year, there was some, some question about whether or not the people had the right to petition for a referendum instead of going to a town meeting. If the budget first, last year, the budget failed the referendum. Following the process, we went to a town meeting, people wanted to have another referendum. It had been done in the past, but because of the situation, we went to, ended up going to court, and the judge decided that two dash four B is our budget process. And you cannot, you cannot petition for a referendum on the budget process, because there is a process set, and we have the right by statute to set a process. And two dash seven is for petitioning for everything else. So our suggestion, and the attorney, the town attorney's suggestion, is to make it clear, because people didn't feel like it was clear in section two dash seven, that this section was not for two dash four B, the budget process. It can be for everything except for the budget process, because we have a budget process, and that is two dash four B. So we would just like to add words to clarify that, yes, you can go to petition for a referendum, but not for the budget process. I hope I made that clear, because it's a little confusing, I know.
So the attorney has suggested that we just add a statement that says section two dash seven does not apply to the budget process, section two dash four. Just so that it would be clear.
It's a simple, one-line statement?
Yes.
Were there any comments on that? Okay, moving on to the next, section number five, regards regarding voting districts. And you have our two registrars of voters here, maybe they would like to speak about
Okay. Where do you want to start? So I'll first explain it, and then you, if you want. Okay, it makes it a little bit easier. So right now, in section three dash four, voting districts, it states that we have four voting districts. We actually have five voting districts. So if you want to explain that, I read, okay. We have four polling locations, we have five polling districts. We have two polling districts right here in the village of Plainfield. We have the 44th and 45th district. We have Central Village, Mooseup, and Warregan. The, the most financially responsible thing to do would be to consolidate all the polling districts into Plainfield. The reason for this is we have to pay so much, because the state mandated things that we, equipment we need to have now. Now we have to have AccuVote, AccuVote voting machines, which is, is like a computer, which requires memory cards and a tape, you know, like a, like an adding machine tape, and an ink cartridge in there. I don't know if you call it a new cartridge, but it's, it's, so it, we can maintain the thing. Memory cards cost us a couple, to process for an election costs approximately $2,000. And that's for all the polling districts, because we have to have so many memory cards per machines. We have 11 AccuVote voting machines, two for each polling place, plus an absentee ballot location, in case we. We have done a central absentee ballot, balloting a couple of, two or three times in the past few years. We have IVS machines, which is also a handicap machine, that people really don't even use, but we have to have them by state statute. And those cost money to operate. We have to pay for, pay for the programming of those machines. We also have to pay for all the poll workers in all these locations. By state statute, you'll have to have so many people per, per district. So it is, the payroll comes to approximately between $6,000 to $7,000 for all the poll workers for an all-day election, which is a lot of money. Then you're talking memory cards and programming of those machines, which costs a couple thousand dollars. And of course, we have to pay for the ballots, which is another couple thousand dollars. Ballot prices won't change, but if we can cut back the employed, the poll workers, and the memory cards, we can save, we can save a few thousand dollars every, in all the elections. And when we look at other areas that are in our area, around us, Woodstock has more square miles than we have, and they only have one polling place. They have 61.8 miles. We have 43.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Something like that.
Yeah. And we have all these polling districts. Parford has 40.6 square miles, they only have one polling district. Canterbury has 40.2. You know, so, and they only have one polling district. So I mean, it's not that we don't, you know, this is, this would make the most feasible thing still.
Thank you, Ari. Any comments?
Can I ask a question? If you combine voting districts or, as you seem, I think you're suggesting, would that work in a presidential year? Or would you end up with long lines?
We probably, I don't think the lines would be too bad, really.
The length of line has become very sensitive. So just to consider that, that, as you consider the whole, question.
Well, we're also.
I understand the economics.
The economic, the economics is something that we have to discuss, and there's other things coming down the pipe that state is wanting to enforce to live. They want us to do poll books, which is another expense, which means we have to have so many poll books per polling place, which is an awesome, another excessive amount. Nothing is, they're making all these, these, these demands on us, and it's unbelievable for the expense for the towns. We're just trying to look at it from a standpoint of the savings for the town. We, I think we could accommodate.
So your recommendation is going from four polling places to one central polling place?
Right. And I'm sure we, and then for a referendum, we could even, because we'd only do it from 12 to 8. If we came to one polling place, we would be willing to do it from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If we have a polling referendum. The referendums are now 12 to 8.
Yep.
So we could be accommodating more people.
Yeah. I don't think the lines would be all that long here in Plainfield. We're not a city like New Haven or Hartford, where you are.
Not just that, like a presidential one that we know will be busier. We could have more checkers at that time, and divide the lists up, you know, smaller lists that people would, to check in.
Right.
You know, you kind of gauge with whatever election it is.
I'm just curious, does it matter, do these other towns that you compared us to have their own five different zip codes, or four different zip codes? Does it matter that we have? So they all have different zip codes? Okay.
They all have different zip codes, definitely. Woodstock, East Woodstock.
Killenwood.
Killenwood has all kinds of.
Okay, I was just curious, does that make a difference, having, you know, more different zip codes than one here?
Is this going to make a difference for our state legislative elections, seeing where split district?
It would still, would still do the two districts. Still have to set up 40, finish at 24. But we do a separation now when people come in.
You just do it here in town halls, or you look at the sites? Put everything in? I like the longer hours, I mean, that's fantastic. That's something that, that's been a big, you know, burr for a lot of people in town, because they work second shift, work third shift, and they can never get here during most times.
You know, the state comes up with these brilliant ideas, but it really costs into the towns. And they have all these unfunded mandates, and you've got to go along.
I'm all for combining, I mean, you know, we're not a huge city. I mean, you know, we have 15,000 people, what is that? Does that, that doesn't include Mooseup and Warregan, or does that? It does include them all, yeah. So we have 16,000 people total, minus, so, I really don't think those lines here are open all day.
We have one more question, Wayne.
Do our, do our poll people get paid by the hour or by the day?
By the hour.
By the hour? The towns will all, each poll list, they'll pay the same rate?
Well, now that we have that, I don't know, solve, if you want to.
So item number six is section four dash three, terms of office, and I'm going to
So this is a little bit of a confusing one also, I seem to get all the confusing ones. I guess the best way to explain it is that, right now, the way our charter is written, when somebody resigns from a position, that's an elected position, the charter says that the new appointee goes until either the end of the term or the next election date, whichever is first. And the next election date is always first. And without explaining in great detail, sometimes by statute, when that position comes up on the ballot on that election day, sometimes the position starts on election day, and sometimes by statute, it starts two weeks after. So sometimes there's a two-week gap. You've appointed somebody to take a position until election day, but the new person doesn't take office until two weeks after. So there's a two-week gap. It happened with Virginia last year, and that's probably the easiest way to explain it. You know, we lost our beloved Burke, and Virginia was appointed to take his place, and she was appointed till the next election day. But because of the way the statute is written, the new position didn't start until two weeks after, so we only had two selectmen for that two-week period, and it was business to conduct. So what we did to fix that this year is the two selectmen that were left, appointed Virginia for that two-week time, just to fill that two weeks. But what I would like, what I think would be easier. Four, yeah. Before I say what I want to do, because I want to do it to two different statute, two different charter sections, this, also section four dash four vacancies, and section four dash three, terms of office, that this is affected by. So I would like to add, on four dash three, to replace, I should say, and make it, the town clerk suggests that we amend, and they shall hold office until their successors have been elected and qualified to, and they shall hold office until the term of their position ends, or until their signed written resignation letter is received by the clerk. That's about the terms of office. And I did forget to mention one thing on that, and I'll come back to that. But section four dash four, I'd like it, because of the two-week gap, to say, just to clarify that change, to make it so that office shall serve until a successor elected at a special election, or, excuse me, or at the next regular town election qualifies, change that to all appointees to a vacancy in elective office shall serve until the next election day, or until their signed written resignation letter is received by the town clerk. So in other words, just keep it till election day. And, and what I'm skipping, and I apologize, is part of this problem is that it says that the, that person that's appointed shall hold office until their successors have been elected and qualified. And what our town attorney says that that means, is that an election, so this is a twofold problem. An election that comes with, say, a two-year vacancy in inland. An election that comes with, say, a two-year vacancy in inland wetlands, and nobody runs for it, that means that nobody has qualified to take the position. So the person who was appointed to take that position until election day has to stay because nobody was qualified to take his place. So it's just very confusing. You have one thing saying you're going to go till election day, you have another thing that says if nobody's qualified, you keep going. Um, it's just really not, um, good. It's not clear. And we're trying to clear that up, and I might not have helped any because I know it's confusing, but I would like to clear that language up and explain it a little bit better into writing so that you understand what we're trying to do. It's just to clear up that vacancy and that term of office so everybody understands what it is. And that if you think that your term is up on election day and nobody runs for your position, that you don't all of a sudden find out that, oh, I can still in that position because nobody qualified to take over, um, that's not really good for people, you know?
And our town attorney would be writing this statement?
Our town attorney would be, not your town clerk, who's not an attorney and does not know exactly how to word it, but our town attorney is the one who suggested that we clear this line in your job book.
Were there any comments on this?
No.
Everybody's like, what? Okay, moving on to appointed boards and commissions.
So, number eight, chapter seven, appointed boards and commissions. So, let's see.
I don't think either one of those exists.
Yeah, I was going to say, all we're recommending is that the jury committee and the medical center board of directors be disbanded and removed from chapter seven of the charter because there isn't one. So we're just asking to take that out. So that's an easy one.
Uh-huh. Excuse me, moving on to town council.
So item number eight dash two, town council. The board of selectmen shall appoint by resolution adopted at a meeting to be held not later than January fifteenth, a town council who shall serve for a term of one year. I just suggest that that date be moved because as a new person comes in and you start your position on November twenty-first, January fifteenth does not give you a lot of time to meet with every council. And there are a few attorneys, and you need to meet with each firm and make a decision. And if you don't want that attorney, then you need to have time to meet with other firms. So I really don't think January fifteenth is long enough for somebody to come in. It really only gives you December and a few weeks in January, and you run into the holidays and the closing. So I'd like to see that date pushed back a little bit later, maybe until the end of February, the beginning of March, so that it gives more time that you can be thorough and really meet with all the attorneys and get a good feel of what they've done for the town or not done, and then meet with other firms.
Were there any comments on that? Okay, please. Um, moving on to section ten, or section nine point one, page ten.
General board procedure. All elective boards and commissions shall annually between two and four weeks after the November election choose a chairman, vice chairman, and a secretary after swearing and newly electing members. The town clerk suggests removing secretary as there, there's really no duties for this position on an elected board. We have recording secretaries for each board, and the reason why we do is because there's a time limit that they have to have the, the minutes typed up and recorded in the town clerk's office. And if you have a volunteer on a board that is a secretary, you really cannot force them off. We have no control over when they get the minutes done. So we have to make sure that they're reported on time, and we do have recording secretaries at the meetings. So we would like to take secretary out of there.
Any comments on that? Okay. Moving on, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Um, do you have one for this commission? Do you have a secretary?
Well, yes, Harry is our secretary for this commission.
Okay. All right.
We don't, we don't have a paid recording secretary.
Not today.
No. And we have our digital recorder, too.
Oh, yes.
Number eleven, section ten point two.
Separation of the operating budget. So the board of finance, finance shall then revise the estimates as it deems desirable and prepare the recommended town budget, which may include a contingency fund not to exceed two percent of the total estimate, estimated expenditures for the current fiscal year, and an appropriation to the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures. The recommended town budget shall also include estimates of the revenue to the town from all sources from the ensuing year, including taxes to be raised. So we recommend that this section be amended to reflect more realistic figures.
Were there any questions? Okay. Moving on, I'm not sure you have this one here, but we did receive a letter from our, Karen Vincent, our tax collector, requesting that that position be an appointed position rather than an elected position. Basically, she states that the tax collector is responsible for over twenty-five million dollars, and this could be a position where a person is appointed preventing an unqualified person through election and becoming responsible for that revenue. The way that Karen explained it to me was that in an election for this position where the position is responsible for the money, um, you could have somebody who's very popular in town, however, knows nothing whatsoever about collecting taxes, and that person could win, and we don't know what would happen with that. So she is requesting that the position be appointed rather than elected.
And there were a number of towns...
Yes, she does, right. Uh, she listed Puckham, Ponchar, Chaplin, Sterling, Brooklyn, Tomlin, Norwood, Chanton, Woodstock, Killingley, and Vona.
At all.
In, in this general area where the position is appointed, and I'm sure it's the same in many other parts of the state, too.
There are pros and cons to that, though, so you really need to see both sides to, are elected. So Louisa, you can better describe what the pros and cons are if you were appointed or if you were elected.
Basically, we had gone through this before a few years ago with both the tax collector and town clerk positions. Um, and our feeling at that time, and my feeling still, so there's a few things. The first reason that I'm not convinced that that's a good idea is because you're taking away the right of the electors. So there's very few positions in the town of Plainfield right now, local government officials that run your town, that you get to vote for. So you get to vote for the first selectman, for the two other selectmen, for the tax collector, the town clerk, and the two registrars. And that is really the only elected positions, other than boards and commissions, that you get to choose. So though I understand, because I'm, there's, you know, two sides to it, and I understand that, you know, maybe somebody would be elected that wasn't qualified, but there is good reason to think that you, the people, should be the ones who decide, based on the information you get in a campaign that's running, who is qualified, and you should be qualified to vote for who you think is the best person. So that's one side of it, is just the idea that, you know, you're taking away one of your voting rights. The second reason is, um, because if you have an elected official, they must live in the town of Plainfield. And once you either appoint or hire, that person no longer has to live here. And so, you know, there's much to be said about, you know, the, um, being vested in your own community and being the person that faces the, the public every day. And if you're a resident or a non-resident, you're going to possibly lose that. Now, again, you know, you may have somebody who lives in town who isn't qualified, but I have to say honestly, you would have said I wasn't qualified, um, when I became town clerk in two thousand and five, because I had very little experience in the town clerk's office. But there's lots of opportunities to learn and become educated and become certified. The town of Plainfield has always had a positive position, um, to let us all get educated and certified as we want to, and, um, I learned a lot on my job. I took a lot of classes, and I now hold two certifications. Um, I know we're not talking about my position, but it's kind of similar. The tax collector has certification programs, has education programs, and, um, somebody who comes in has that opportunity. Um, and lastly is just, um, maybe not so much with the tax collector, though, but I'm sure that the tax collector, uh, has some, is in a position that has some kind of power to make decisions and isn't particularly swayed by another elected official to maybe do things a way that she may not think is right. She should be able to, um, express her opinion without worrying about her job, and if you're appointed or elected, that's another thing that can happen, and it does happen in some towns, that, um, they're pressured into doing something that maybe they don't think is right, but they're not elected, they're appointed, and they do what they're told. So those are just a few things to think about when you're switching a position from being elected to being appointed. And that's just my opinion.
Just one other thing, too, that I, I, I think is very important. I agree with what you said, and I understand, but in the town of Plainfield, we elect a selectman, a first selectman, every two years. Now, if we appointed the tax collector under one selectman, okay, that's great. But what happens if another selectman is, another person is, is voted in as a selectman in a different party or whatever? I'm not saying that would happen, but it's a potential that, that you get a new tax collector every two years. You could.
I suppose that's possible.
You could elect him.
Something I want to watch.
And I think the opinion of all selectmen should come into play in this decision also, on what, what you feel.
My gut feeling is I strongly feel like there should be a resident of our town, because if you are a resident of town, you're more vested. Um, I believe you're going to work harder because you are a resident in the town. And like George said, there is that possibility that every two years, if a new selectman comes in, there's going to be constant change. And I can only speak for myself, just coming into office, two years is a very short time to get in and really accomplish a lot, because your first year is spent getting to know your departments, getting to know the people that work here, getting to know the policies, the procedures. There is so much in-house that needs to be addressed in that short period of time that two years really is not a long time for a person to be. So again, like George said, that could be changing all the time, and that's, that's a lot for a department, that the tax assessor, the town clerk's office, they're very busy offices. So that's something else to consider. Yes?
Can a department, um, had, be in a union, do you have a union for department ads?
Yes.
So she could become a union employee? And that isn't always a good thing. You know, it depends on your union, but that's something else to consider, because all of a sudden now she's a union person.
Yes, that is true.
Well, I think she's in a union now, don't you think?
No.
No, I don't think elected officials are in unions. And I have a second part of that question. When we're, um, when the parties are nominating people to run, there must be a certain criterion that they have to abide by, no? Jenny?
Stand up and breathe.
Well, I can speak for me being endorsed. Before you are endorsed, you don't just show up at a Democratic or a Republican town committee and say you want to run for office, and you're like, okay, we're going to endorse you. You go through a lot of questioning, um...
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. They make it sound like, oh, any, any, well, you know, anybody can run, but it's definitely a screening process.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Are you saying that instead of being elected, that you would appoint them every two years is what the two options are? Is that what I'm hearing? Or this person is elected or they're hired as a full-time employee at the Board of Town Home?
Well, you can't be a hired elected official. You're either elected or you're hired.
So it would be a full-time position?
Yes.
So, I mean, I would actually prefer that, and I sometimes I think that not living in the town, that actually would be better, because they're not, they're, they don't have relatives here, they don't have a party here, they don't have any ties to this town. So if they're doing anything sneaky, they're not going to do it sneaky, they're just going to do the job. They're not here as a town person, because there could be a lot of favors that can go down with someone that lives in this town. And lots of times, people, there's not some of their own potion. I mean, Louisa had nobody running against her, so they had one person. I mean, I think her position should be not elected either. I mean, just, just for those two reasons. I mean, it's just my thoughts on it, but...
Can I just add one more thing?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, too, just because it came to my mind, that keep in mind, if, if this did go to the people and did get voted in, the terms of office are already set for this election that happened in two thousand and seventeen, so the terms of these two positions won't even come up until two thousand and twelve.
Right, yeah, no, I'm not saying I have anything wrong going there anyway.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, no, right, we're going to be a powerfully employed and elected official because of the, nobody runs anyways. So, I mean, what's the deal? You may as well just...
But Wayne?
Plus, you don't know anybody on there half the time anyway, so they don't know anything about you. It doesn't matter who they are, what they do, or what their qualifications are. Most people in town don't know anyone. They're voting by a T and R. That's it.
Yeah, well, thank you, uh, Wayne.
I was, I was coming here tonight, I mean, I just got off the board of finance, and I thought, every time we had a two-year election, I used to think to myself, it was time that we get this in for the selectman to serve a four-year term. I, my, Kathy, for saying that, and I highly endorse that, and we think, really, we think this over for a four-year term for the selectman.
Is that something you think we should consider? You change the charter for, rather than just be your selectman term, four-year term?
We have tried that before.
I believe we did twice some time ago. I don't remember all the details. But it's something that this commission can talk about, and of course, we'll speak a few about it, too.
Can I make comment on that?
You don't want to work four years.
There's pros and cons to that, of course. Like I said, two years is a very short period.
You could get a bad one. That's why you really, just can't vote the party all the time.
Right. So that's my concern, is if you get someone in that is not doing a good job, four years is a long time for somebody to have control of your town.
Well, maybe we can impeach him.
Maybe.
There is a practice, and I can't name any, offhand, name any Connecticut municipalities that use it, but it's widely used around the country, and that is the element of recall. So if someone's really bad, there can be a petition that raises a referendum, referendum, or a, a election, such, recall the, that person for office.
I've heard of that, yes.
And, um, it's, 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 it's been around for a long, long time. It stems back to the late nineteenth century, I think. But I don't, as I said, I can't cite any towns that get, get offhand that happily call for it.
But then again, if the first selectman does a good job, I don't believe they would have any problem getting elected again if they wanted to run.
You might.
Right. And just in common to Louisa, I don't want to be here in four years. I do want to come back in four years.
I was just kidding. I don't want to be down.
I know.
Are there any other comments from anybody here? Okay, then, we will close this public hearing, and we will have another public hearing on May thirty.
May, may I?
Okay.
Speak of, of my agenda. My name is Peter Curry, and I, I'll, if you want a picture, I don't, I don't need the picture. But I, I'd like to stand where I can speak to everyone. I'm a resident of Plainfield, have been... I'm a resident of Plainfield, have been for, well, since 2002. I've moved here into permanent residence. I own the property that I live in at present time, since the year 2000. And I live in Warrigat, so we're kind of sensitive about having a little polling place. I'm just kidding. Public, I've been in public service at the top management level. What was it? I shouldn't say. I was in public service for 43 years. And significantly, incidentally, I was in six municipalities in a regional organization, the Metropolitan District in the Highlands, where I was assistant district manager. Significantly, too, preceding that career in public service, I worked at a private sector organization called the Connecticut Public Expenditure Council, which was founded, funded, I should say, by major Connecticut businesses and industries at the time, to perform research pertaining to state and local government, and serves a watchdog with respect, in particular, to expenditures and taxes. Years before I was hired in 1960, CPUC had created a municipal consulting service, which did pro bono consulting for municipalities around the state, free of charge. And the Home Rule Law, the Home Rule Law, or Chapter 99, under which your commission meeting, polling meetings, toward charter revision, was enacted in 1957, and it didn't get started, didn't, it took a while for municipalities to take advantage of it. It was the land of steady habits, so it didn't get go. And day one, it didn't start running, a land office business. But soon, after a while, towns began to realize and grab the opportunity it provided to shape their own fundamental laws, which is what you're speaking of tonight, the Charter, is the town of Plainfield's fundamental law. And without, and they did not, before that time, we'll get too far into the depth of this, but before that time, towns had to approach the General Assembly to have a charter or to change that charter. And that means there was plenty of political log-rolling, and swapping, and back scratching, et cetera, and many towns just didn't want to get into that. And so, there was a kind of a need built, had built up, where towns wanted to proceed to new ways to govern, but they were reluctant to do it the way it was set up, where you had to go to the General Assembly. So, when I went there to work, in a variety of subjects, the principle that I handled, a principal assignment of mine was to be the, do the grunt work related to charter drafting, and the consulting work that was connected with that. We probably averaged two evening meetings with charter commissions per week for quite a stretch. And so, I've been, charters have been in my blood, if you will, for a long, long time. Moreover, I worked under a man called Hubert Stone, who was the director of municipal consulting, and later, the assistant executive director of CPUC. Hubert had been among the prime participants in drafting the Home Rule Law, Chapter 99. So, in a sense, I was sitting at the, at the feet of the master in terms of charter provisions, charter drafting. And I was looking, I was humbled by the, like, good fortune of having someone, throughout my career, many mentors, having, starting with Hubert Stone, who had also wisdom and knowledge, but were too, also generous of sharing it with a Millhands kid from northeastern Connecticut. I have some proposals, and I wish to state them succinctly as I can, with that background. In addition to reviewing the existing document needed for the editorial improvements and changes, technical changes, we've been discussing this evening, I respectfully ask that the commission seriously focus on whether the form and processes of government that the current charter provides well serves the citizens of Plainfield in the present and in the future, in the future, as the town grows and the complexion of the residents changes. While the commission is obliged to consider the recommendations of the board of selectmen, which you've heard, I would ask that you go beyond that, because you are not constrained to only consider those proposals, or on those subjects. The law, in fact, Section 7-190 empowers the commission to consider all other changes to the charter that the commission deems desirable to, so approach. Taking a broad view, seems to be, to be an opportunity to look at the whole picture, the whole organizational arrangement. And trying from my background and years of direct practice, I espouse with firm conviction that the best model is the council manager forum. An elected council, appointed town manager. First, it provides an optimal means for addressing three essential things. One, it provides for representative democracy through which citizens are truly enabled to understand the structure of their government, to hold their local government to account and control its policies by using the town council, which has the policymaking authority. Second, nonpartisan, suitably experienced professional management would be provided, through which government operations may best be run with efficiency and effectiveness, including financial matters, assets management, human resource administration, et cetera. Plus, having at the ready a manager's advice and counsel relative to the ever-fluent matter of evaluating policy alternatives and proposals would be a great fight. And third, a hallmark of council manager government is a short ballot, whereby who governs is focused on a single policymaking body, the council. Simplicity would greatly improve voters' understanding and foster better accountability. Those are the, my recommendations. Now, unless there be cynics here this evening, I assure you that I am not seeking to lay the groundwork for potential employment, for myself or for my two sons. As for myself, at 81, I'm well past the sell-by date. And unwilling, and moreover, I'm unwilling to resume interminable meetings that night. I like the reason, to relax and get better early on. As for my sons, they're well along in their careers in the private sector, and I don't think the money that is available, the salaries and remuneration available in the public sector would tempt them. I want to thank you, Commissioner, for entertaining.
Thank you, Pierre. It's something we will discuss in our next meeting.
Okay.
I just wondered, what about a foreign government, more like Putnam, with a mayor and, rather than a town council, a mayor and a town manager?
That is a thousand alternatives. It's something that should be considered, certainly. I, I have no argument to be made, no strong argument to make against it. It works, helps Putnam, it's worked well there. And in fact, one of my jobs was to be chief administrative officer of the town area. And so, I was in Sodom in that same, so, I was called chief administrator.
I have a question. I don't know if you did it already, but what is your name?
Peter Curry.
Thank you.
I thought I said it.
You did, you did say it.
I didn't, I'm hard of hearing, that's why.
So am I. Thank you, Peter. While I have selected one, selecting a year, I like this, for those of us that are hard of hearing, this is a hell of a place to have a public hearing.
I know.
Or me, because it's, you're in a barn.
Yeah.
Right? And there needs to be seriously consideration given to having public addresses, you know, easy to use, easy to set up, just about every town has it. But I know, I think if you work out, half of them have it.
We actually have them, we just didn't set it up.
This is New York, some of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from anybody tonight?
The Police Commission, is that still in existence?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and why exactly do we have one? I'm still unclear why we have a Police Commission when we have a police chief and a first selectman? Because from what I understand, a police chief answers to the first selectman.
No, he does not. It's false. The police chief directly answers to the Police Commission, Police Commissioner and the town charter, and is to keep politics out of the office of the Police Department. Because if the police chief answered to the selectman, who's obviously a politician and elected, politics may infiltrate the Police Department, and that's the reason why there is a Police Commission. There's other forms out there, but that's the elected form that we have in the town of Plainfield.
So, it's like a buffer between the police and the elected office?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Those are my father's. You can find the note.
Here are the other chances.
When is your next meeting here?
May 3.
The next meeting is going to be next Wednesday, May 2, but that's not a public hearing. The next public hearing is in May 30.
Yes.
May 30 and 6:30 here. And as, I think as an item, it's been recommended to this board that we do not go over 10 items to be voted on or to bring to the ballot, because of the room on the ballot, the size of what it contains, or how much it takes up. That was recommended from the attorneys and also from our town clerk. So, as of right now, from the suggestions that you had and the suggestions that we have, we probably have about 16 to 17 in front of us, and we will pare them down to probably a number of about 10 or under, sir, because that's just the recommendation that we got, because we have to fill it all on one ballot.
A recommendation, I'm sorry, recommendation from who?
That was the recommendation to this commission from the town's attorney and also the town clerk, because of what needs to fit on the ballot, the size of the ballot.
Okay, I have to talk to you.
Go ahead and say, just want to put that out there.
I understand that.
Okay, then, there are no more comments to close this public hearing. Thank you all for coming tonight.